All right, good morning. I will call the February 2nd, 2021 City Council Meeting to Order. I'll ask Captain Pickens if he could lead us in our invocation and our pledge. Please stand.
Well, very much, if you will pray with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless this city. We ask that you be with the family of those lost to COVID-19. We ask that you protect our first responders, those in our military, and those who serve others. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America
and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think we have Sandy, basically all council members are present. I tried to go through and look. No one's in any exact order, so I think they're all here. And then Item 4 is approval of the minutes, the January 5th, 2021 City Council Meeting. Y'all had those minutes sent to you. So there'd be no additions or corrections. Those minutes stand approved as read. And no proclamations today. Item 6 is invitation for public comments, so anyone wishing to speak on items on first reading, or if any council member has any communication from a constituent items on first reading that can be read at that time. Item 1, the first reading is consideration of an ordinance to barricade an unnamed north-south alley between East College Street, East Lafayette Street, North Liberty Street, and North Highland Avenue for the purpose of closing to vehicular traffic. I'll call on Stan to give us an update on that.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. You having your packet, the materials pertinent to this request. If you'll remember from last month's meeting, there were some questions about access to a garage on the property owner that's on the west side of the alley. And also, we have talked to the property owner that's on the east side, who has plans in the future at some point to have a fire exit into that alley. And so to accommodate both those needs, we altered the exhibit that you have attached to your ordinance. Basically, what will happen is we will barricade or put a bollard in the north end of that alley, which is the college side, which will block through traffic from being in the alley. And then at some later date, once we have a final location for that fire exit, and we will install another bollard on the south end to allow them to have access but to block traffic from that side. So that's why on the exhibit now, it says that the future location will be determined, you know, and we will accommodate the garage and the fire exit.
Thank you, Stan. Any questions on that from council?
Stan, have you had a chance to talk with the folks that were concerned about this being blocked? Are they okay with your recommendation?
Their only concern was that we were going to block them from having access. So now that we're providing them an access, even after we caused the through traffic to go away, then they're happy.
And I've talked with her also, and she's happy with that.
And what about the other people on the opposite side? Have they, I know they voiced their opinion about later on, they might want to put a fire exit up there. So how are they feeling about?
Again, as long as we make accommodations for them, you know, that was always their desire, and it was impossible to accommodate with vehicular traffic being there in the past. As long as we're making accommodations so that they can use the alley as a secondary exit, which will allow them to use the other floors of that building, then they're satisfied with that.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Stan.
Yes.
Is our, are we waiting on them to figure out the fire escape situation before the bollards go in, or is that?
We will, we're waiting for them to determine what form that will take. But again, by installing a bollard on the north end, you basically stop through traffic. So it accomplishes that for pedestrians. And at some point in the future, we'll look at what we do on the south end just to finalize it. But that's not going to impede us from stopping vehicular traffic. So we'll wait until all those things have kind of shaken out.
We haven't given them like a deadline. It's more so whenever they decide.
Yes, it's just whenever we have the information of what form it's going to take, then we can determine what that location will be.
Sandy, do you see the potential for, you know, if they need fire access on the south end of the property, you know, some conflict between fire access and vehicular access to that garage?
It's hard to say right now with not knowing what form that would take. But, you know, we will evaluate that at some point in the future to see what we need to do. If there, if a conflict does arise, then we'll just have to see what we can do to mitigate it.
Notice the Fire Chief is online with us. Chief, that alley would be a little too narrow, would it not, for you to try to put a fire apparatus in that alley?
Well, our newer trucks are a little bit wider, but we do have brush trucks and other means of accessing the egress on both sides. But after we look at what the bollards are going to do, I think we should be all right. We will get with Fire Marshal Childress, and he will get with Stan, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chief.
The fire escape is not for, so the fire department has access to the alley now. The fire escape is for development of the third floor of the building on the east side. So they could, if someone's there, they can escape, have external fire escape access on the escape portion. All right, this is an item on first reading, and so I'll open up for public comment. Seeing none, I will close the public comment and ask for a motion.
I move.
Don. New discussion. All right, we'll do a roll call vote and start with Pickens.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Brooks.
Aye.
Buchanan.
No.
Pretty.
Yes.
Hold on a second. Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McKelvey.
Yes.
Disco. I think I heard a yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so motion passes eight to one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Item 2 is a consideration of proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recoveries for damage at City Hall in the amount of $14,584.77.
Good morning, Council. As the mayor described, these are insurance proceeds, $14,584 for damage at City Hall, and this amendment would authorize proceeding with repair.
So we have, so we're going to hold that motion because it's got a public hearing, so I'm opening up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition, do. We know, close the public hearings. We got a motion from Councilman Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Who is that second from?
Pretty.
Pretty, okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, roll call. Pickens.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Brooks.
Aye.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McKelvey.
Yes.
Disco.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Item 3 is a consideration of proposed budget amendment to the FY '21 budget ordinance in the amount not to exceed $2 million for the acquisition of vehicles for the Jackson Police Department.
Yes, this ordinance, our amendment to our approved budget ordinance for this year, if approved, would authorize the city to move forward with a lease purchase agreement for police vehicles. I understand there are 30, would be 31 new vehicles involved in this lease purchase agreement. The agreement would be with Ford Credit, the Municipal Services Division. Currently, the aggregate value of the lease would be $1,758,696. It's a five-year lease. The annual payments, based on the proposal as it exists today, would be $381,611 per year. The first payment would be due when we receive or accept the vehicles, which is anticipated to be this fiscal year. The Police Department has proposed some budget amendments from their operating, current operating funds, which would be transferred to the debt service requirements associated with this lease. Those proposed budget amendments total $400,000 a year, beginning this year and continuing annually for the balance of the lease.
Thank you, Bobby. We have Chief Wiser, Captains Benton and Gamble also on that can answer questions from the council about the, Captain Benton for the vehicles for the fleet, and then Gamble and Wiser for the rest of it.
Chief, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. In reference to, could you speak a little bit about kind of the Ford financing? Is there any opportunity for a reduced rate there? Have we looked at that? Maybe that's something you and Bobby can talk about.
I'm going to refer to Captain Benton on, she's handled the lease proposal. And I'll let her talk to you about that.
That is at a reduced rate. The 4.25% is at a reduced rate. It was 5.45 because there's a price break when you order more. I think it's right at 15 or 20 cars, there's a price break or the percentage break, but it did start out at 5.25 or 5.45, and we got it down to 4.25.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Arnold, should we anticipate another budget amendment? Or do we need to consider this modifying the current budget amendment to take into account the operational transfers to debt service?
Yes, there will be, if this ordinance is approved, there'll actually be two budget amendments that the council will need to consider. You might reflect back on the lease agreement for the fire department equipment acquisition. If you might know, it'll work similarly to that. The first budget amendment would be to recognize, this would be in the capital alley fund. This would be to recognize the lease proceeds and the necessary appropriation in the capital alley fund to acquire the vehicles under the lease. And then a second budget amendment would be to transfer what is currently funds budgeted in the operating budget for the Police Department in the general fund, transfer those to the debt service fund to service the debt.
Okay.
Chief, once you get these new cars, how are you going to dispose of the old ones? And what will the funds be if you sell these off, will those funds go back in to help with the new cars?
Good morning, Councilman Pickens. So just to kind of highlight, I sent you, you got some information. So currently in the fleet, there's a 108, well, 17 vehicles that have 180,000 miles. There's another 11 vehicles that have 170,000 miles. So we've had to replace multiple engines over the past six months. We're having front-end issues. And so if we don't do something, you know, pretty soon, we're going to be driving a bunch of police cars in the fleet with 200-plus thousand miles by the end of the year. So that's a, you know, that can create some unsafe conditions for officers along with the community, with us responding Code Three. The budget amendments that we made this year, those are vacancies that are not currently filled. So those are areas that were under budget. So, you know, initially, when I made this proposal, I said we would do it without asking for any additional funds. We'd find the money within our existing budget. So all those are positions that are not currently filled. Now, the one that kind of stands out is the motor vehicle fuel. And so when we budget for motor vehicle fuel, we budget for worst-case scenario, we're for gas that is three to four dollars. Well, this year, gas has been extremely cheap on the front end, so we're under budget. We anticipate that next fiscal year that gas prices will go up. So from '22 to '25, there are some different line items that we're proposing to make these payments through. And we're confident that if we can replace the vehicle fleet, we can reduce the motor vehicle expense line item where that's where we've been paying for the engines out of, the front ends that we're having to repair, and others in patrol salaries and benefits. And, you know, I think last year during the Budget Committee meeting, I told you, I told the council, as long as I've been the police chief, we've always been, you know, eight to 10 officers short. And we can operate, operate being that short. But, you know, we face a lot of challenges with recruiting. And so those are vacant positions, and that's where we're proposing to use some of that money from. So the reality is, if this were to go through, then we would eliminate six to seven of those vacant salaries to pay for this vehicle initiative.
Chief, let me interrupt you just a second. My initial question was this. Once you get the new cars, how are you going to dispose of the old ones? And if you get revenue from selling those old ones, will that revenue then be turned back in to help pay for the new cars?
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, you know, we have a program called the P4 program. So if an officer has 15 years of service, they're still in patrol. We assign them a police car. So I sent a list of all the vehicles in the P4 program. So there's 2007s, 8s, and 10s in that program with high mileage and end of life. So like the six chargers that we recently replaced the motor in, we would probably put those in that P4 program. We would take the best cars we could out of this fleet that were salvageable and put in the P4 program. And then any vehicle that we disposed of in the P4 program or in the fleet would be sold on go deal. Now, any, all that money goes back into the general fund. Unless it's tied specifically to a Metro Narcotics case or a City Narcotics case where it goes in those specific funds, everything else goes in the general fund.
Okay.
Chief Wiser, could you, so this been mentioned, this is similar to the fire department situation. And we, that was edited and kind of brought through Legend Committee and then came to council for consideration. Can you kind of walk us through how process works? And I know you mentioned there's a state contract. Are we required to use that option? Or were there other options considered that we didn't go with?
I'll let Captain Benton address the lease she's been working on firsthand as far as this being a state contract. If it's state contract, it doesn't require any bids, so I'll let her address that.
Mr. Austin, we were actually in the process of getting the vehicles that we ordered pre-COVID days. We were getting them in, and I just pitched it out there to Ford of Murfreesboro about a leasing program because at the time, the fire department was doing theirs. And I did reach out to that company. They went through, and PNC does not finance police vehicles because their lifespan is not as long as a fire truck. So I did reach out to them, and I just started getting information about the, through Ford. And, you know, I proposed it, said something to the chief about it, and that's where we ended up. And they are on state contract, which is nice because you don't have to sit there and get bids and stuff. Or in this case, if we got so many, it would be out sealed bids. So being on state contract to help us out a lot of not having to worry about doing the sealed bid or finding bids or anything.
Yeah, I get that. And you mentioned earlier, Captain Benton, there was a decrease in the rate that you were originally quoted, which was good. I was just comparing it. It looks like back in a couple of months ago with fire department, their rate was like in the twos. And then, you know, this one's looking at like, you know, in four, 4.25, so just trying to make.
It was at 5.99%. I said 5.25, and I found on paperwork that just, it would be at 5.99% if we didn't hit the break, and then they lowered it to 4.25.
Councilman, I think they, and I'm just speculating that they may have got a bigger rate because they had, you know, vehicles that were more expensive and put them in a different threshold than what we're dealing with.
Especially his dollar amount in payback period, too, is a 10-year lease as opposed to a five-year lease for these police cars.
Chief, could you, or maybe Captain Benton could answer, you know, on the lifespan of these cars moving forward? You know, what reasonable life can we expect out of them? How many miles a year do you guys put on these vehicles?
Well, you know, currently, some of the fleet cars that we have in service are driving two chills five and six days a week. I mean, at the current, what we're looking at is the fleet itself, the majority of the fleet is made up of 2012 and 2014 police cars. And you can see kind of the average miles in all these vehicles or fleet cars. So, you know, six to seven, eight years, you know, anything, I've got, hopefully, the next vehicles we get doesn't have some of the front-end issues that we're having with this particular brand of vehicle we're driving right now. So, you know, a fleet car is not going to last as long as a car that is assigned to investigator or supervisor. They're not, it's not going to be driven as much and not as many miles. So kind of, what I was hoping is if we establish this lease-to-purchase vehicle line item, that that is maintained, we make the budget amendment to fund that line item, and that is maintained. So hopefully, we don't get in a situation that we're in right now and we're able to pay for these vehicles through the operational count without a budget increase. But every five years, we're buying new vehicles out of that line item because it's already established within the existing budget. Kind of how we got in this situation is, you know, over the years, we were just buying four to five police cars a year. Some years, we weren't buying any. So we were just, you know, kind of kicking the can down the road, just trying to maintain. And it eventually caught up with us, and now we're dealing with the fleet that is, you know, like I said, there's 28 vehicles with over 170,000 miles.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that putting a plan together long-term, where we make sure we got reliable vehicles on the road is in the best interest of your department and the city as a whole. At least doing it together gets us where we're at. So I think we all need to be aware that if this is the plan at present, moving forward, you know, 31 vehicles are going to come up in five to seven years to be replaced again. And we're going to have to make this decision kind of on a repeat basis.
Councilman, I would just add, too, that, you know, with the financial situation and challenges that we've had over the past year, or our last few years, you know, traditionally, we bought all our vehicles through capital. So if we were to go buy all these vehicles through capital, I mean, we could have come up with one, 200 million. And so we're able to do this through the operational side and minimizing the financial impact, you know, with the city.
Chief, I had mentioned about openings. How many opens that you have, that you did have vacancies that you're not going to fill?
Currently, under this proposal, there would be six to seven vacancies that we would not fill, and we would utilize that money to fund this project.
That's fair. They won't hurt your department as far as patrolling. It's not going to hurt you if a man's out here.
No, sir. Those are vacancies that we've had over the last several years that we've been unable to fill.
All right. And then also, maintenance-wise, with this leasing program, maintenance costs, then that cost.
Yeah, so, I mean, right now, I think we were, we're over, last year, 173,000 on repair and maintenance in that lineup because we're having to spend so much money to keep these cars on the road.
Good morning, Mayor. May I be recognized?
Sir, go ahead. Sorry, my computer's free.
Okay. Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Council. We want to welcome Ms. McKinney to the auditor's position and all other new hires. Well, I don't question the need, and I surely don't question the chief's and JPD's diligence in maintaining their budget. I do question the process. I would like Chairman Taylor to speak a bit more, if he would. Don't want to put him on the spot to why it's so important that this measure go before the Budget Committee.
Ernest, if you wouldn't mind muting your mic there, I'd be happy to.
Now let's talk about two other important court cases that he was there for.
I think we've got Dina as well that's not active mic. Yeah, so, you know, typically, the process that we've looked at is, you know, evaluating and vetting capital projects like this. Because ultimately, it is a capital project, though, you know, the strategy that the chief is talking about and that the Fire Chief implemented in shifting what was previously budgeted operational funds to take care of capital is what we at the Budget Committee have recommended in previous years. And so, you know, moving forward, we need to make sure that these processes are vetted, that we're, that the needs are being met and that they're planned as we, as the chief has brought up, you know, in five years, seven years, we're going to have to do this again. And also to vet out that it's the most appropriate way to finance the project. And so that's a question that I continue to have is, we have this lease option, and there are certain advantages that come along with the lease option. One of those being, you know, being able to navigate the bureaucracy of our typical capital purchasing in a more rapid fashion. And so there are those advantages, but there's also the disadvantage of having an increased rate on interest rate. You know, municipal interest rates, I think, are somewhere in the twos at present. And so those are the kind of discussions we need to have, and it's a, it's a. And so those are the kind of discussions we need to have and it's a, it's a delicate balance. The budget committee would be happy if the council would like us to review this, we could review it. You know, getting, getting some of this information, I know that, at, at the end of the day yesterday, I do appreciate the chief's work in putting this together. This is what we've talked about as far as, you know, having an account of where these funds are going to come from. If the council would, would, you know, want this, we can review that. We meet on the 11th of February is our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Well, I'm ready to do something.
And with, with, with that being said, I would like to make a motion to table this ordinance until the budget committee can review that and then report back. And I will leave that motion open for Chairman Taylor to give us a date certain when he would be able to report back to the council in order for us to vote on this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we do that, I would like to add that we have a called meeting so we could do this as soon as possible since they've done this work and things rather urgent. If we do postpone it and let them look at it, that we have a called meeting to get back together as soon as possible.
And I'll, I'll accept that friendly amendment.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
That, Councilman, pretty?
Yes.
Okay, all right. A motion is second to table. Roll call, Pickens.
No.
Dodd.
No.
Brooks. Brooks.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Buchanan. Voting, voting to table the, the budget amendment for the lease purchase.
No.
Okay. Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McElvy.
Yes.
Cisco.
Oh.
All right, motion to table passes five to four.
Chief, also I'd like to add, we can, you know, our next regularly scheduled meeting is next Thursday. If, if the council desires that we could move that up to potentially Tuesday. I don't know if, if I can get everybody scheduled by the end of this week. But, but I, I can move as rapidly as possible.
Okay. The only thing I would add, and Captain Benton could talk more about this, the current lease agreement that we negotiated was good through, actually through the end of January and they gave us a extension through February. So we probably might have to renegotiate. It, it should be the same and we may have to renegotiate it. And so we may have to submit a new lease agreement.
The quote that we got, yeah, the quote we got expires on February the 8th. So I can contact Ford and, and ask about the percentage if we can get it down, any lower than that. And, and actually get another quote to extend out through possibly March.
Hey, Mayor, I have a question. Just going back to the budget committee. And what's going to be different? I mean, I know we'll get more information, we'll understand more. But after the end, I mean, because as the budget committee, we would not be voting on it to send it to the main council. So what's the, I know the advantage at this point now, what, what will be? Because I think we said in the press and some things that we hadn't brought before the budget committee. Now we taking this before the budget committee, you know, because there's some things on here today that we're going to vote on that didn't go before the budget committee. So, you know, we, we, it's going to be, it's unbalanced what we about to do right now.
Well, we, we can discuss that moving forward. The vote's already been cast now, so we can, we can discuss that moving forward. All right, item four is a consideration of proposed budget amendment to recognize CARES Act reimbursement and appropriations in the amount of $916,936.
Thank you. As the mayor mentioned, this budget amendment would amend our budget to recognize the CARES Act reimbursement that we have actually received to date. That totals $916,936. This budget amendment would also appropriate or recognize the expense associated with the reimbursement we've received to date. It's reflected on the budget amendment, the employee bonus, the cost of that program would be $675,589. There is some document processing software that would total 38,800, I'm sorry, 32,630, 80, 32,836. There are, there's some software in the building department related to permitting functions. That's 107,826. There is some technology for the fire department that would be placed actually in the vehicles for the fire department, $75,000. And finally, $25,685 would be appropriated to the operating account where we've recognized costs related to the COVID pandemic for a total of $916,936. In the way of information, when this program was started by the federal government and in the state government, we were allocated for the city of Jackson, provided we had qualifying expenses, a little bit over a million dollars in total. So we've received $916,936. We are expecting to receive an additional $86,000. When those funds are received, we would bring the amendment related to recognizing that reimbursement as well as any associated expenses related to that. Just in the way of information, the city has actually filed for an additional $800,000 in CARES Act reimbursement. We have the qualifying expenses and we're in hopes that if some of the allocated funds across the state are not used, that we may get some consideration for some additional funding here in Jackson.
Move the approval.
All right, we have a motion, hold that motion. We have item on first reading, so open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, favor of opposition two. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Got a motion from Councilman Buchanan. You have a second? Second, Councilman Dodd, any discussion?
Excuse me. As Councilman Dodd alluded to post-vote previously in our last agenda item, this is another issue where we, we have to put in the right orders and procedures on, you know, the recognition of budget amendments and recognitions of expense items. You know, this, the, these, some of these costs have already been expended and we need to make sure those items are coming before the council pre-expenditure. That's a preferential order and something that we've, we've been hoping to establish.
I also hope the, the councilmen that serve on these, these committees, like the innovation committee, they recommend these purchases also help us out prior to, instead of reminding us after the fact. Roll call, Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McElvy.
Yes.
Cisco.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, item five is consideration of a proposed budget amendment to appropriate funds for the solid waste fund in the amount of $43,750.
Budget amendment would transfer from the solid waste fund, fund balance to revenue in the solid waste fund, $43,750 and we would appropriate that money, $16,000 of that for some technology related to the efficient use of the claw trucks for multi-waste pickup. And then $27,750 in total for an awareness campaign for the public that will be important when we move into later this summer into the new solid waste contract.
Mayor, I have a question if, if I could. Yes, good, good morning again, and, and this is kind of a redress. But if budget ordinances and budget amendments don't come before the budget committee, then why do we have a budget committee? And I, I don't, you know, that's, that's, maybe that's a, a question without an answer. But I, I just think we need to consider that going forward.
At some point, we're going to have the budget committee advocate all the responsibility of the council. We require every amendment, the, the reason for the budget committee is an advisory role for the budget, not to approve nor deny budget amendments during the process, that's the council's responsibility.
I hope everybody got what I sent out about this budget amendment. The 16,000 is going to complete the task of tracking our claw trucks online, which funny enough, I found that in the 2006 city goals to put that online. So that's just an interesting note. And as Bob explained, the awareness campaign is to do some public information about the solid waste contract, what to do with their garbage, so forth and so on, in anticipation of the new contract. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We will take this up in March with respect to backdoor, front door garbage collection, is that correct?
The, the vote taken up in March will be to Hootler Award the contract too. The, the RFP was sent out was for curbside pickup with exceptions.
Now, do we vote on it today?
No, you're voting today, you're voting on the education awareness expenditure and the expenditure to track our claw trucks.
But do we vote on curbside versus backdoor today?
You won't vote on curbside nor backdoor at any point, the RFP was sent out already.
Okay, okay. So, so we have heard on the contract to come next month?
Yes.
Okay, well, I have a lot of questions next month.
And we have all the answers.
That's good.
This is an item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition two. Seeing no one close a public hearing, is there a motion?
I'm over.
Motion by Dodd, is there a second?
Second.
Second by?
Taylor.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All right, Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Buchanan.
No.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McElvy.
Yes.
Cisco.
No.
Motion passes seven to two. All right, no items on second reading, get to new business. Item one is consideration of a proposal to purchase 105, 109, 111 Church Street, Rockabilly Platte, along with adjacent alley.
Mr. Chairman? I've heard several, several things what we're going to do with, with, with purchase of this. What's the latest?
Stan's about to tell you.
All right, so you have in your packet the proposal that was submitted. The public notice was given to ask for proposals for that property. The CRA, because it being in the redevelopment area, vetted those proposals and we received the one. And so you have that in your packet, the CRA is recommending approval of this to you. And Ari Butts is on the Zoom meeting and he can answer any questions that you have concerning his proposal and what he tends to use the building for.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ari, you can go ahead and kind of give the council a synopsis of your proposal, please.
All right. So we, we purchased Old Regions Bank Building, which is kind of a, you know, close and adjacent to this property last year and have redone it and moved two of our businesses there, High Point Logistics and Haven Insurance Partners. And so we're kind of vested in, in that block and downtown in general. So our plans are to take the lot where the stage is and clean it up and put in a green space and some additional parking for our building and, and the Rockabilly Building and immediately come into the Rockabilly Building and shore up the building and put a new roof on it because it's in desperate need of a new roof and some other things. Or it is probably going to have to be torn down if that doesn't happen sooner, sooner rather than later. And then our long-term plans are to develop that property into either a mixed-use residential and commercial or residential. We're pretty open to what we're going to do with it long-term, but initially it will be, get a roof on it, get it dry, get it, get it shored up and, and continue to, to improve the block. We, we wanted to keep the, the guitar and a couple of other things in our green space, but somebody came and got them.
Yeah, those, that guitar and the green space that was promised to the, the museum over there, so.
No worries, but we'll put something up and, and, you know, we want to keep the theme of the rocket, some historical theme to the Rockabilly along with the, the, that being the first fire station. So we want to try to do something with that as well.
All right, we have any questions?
Move the approval. Move the approval.
Second.
Second by Dodd, any further questions?
Have we had a appraisal on this property?
Do what?
Is there an appraisal on this property?
You're, you're cutting out every time you're speaking, Cisco, I can understand what you're saying.
I'm asking, have we had appraisal on this property?
I think he's asking for an appraisal, Mayor.
Okay. Stan, where are you at, Stan?
We have not, you know, appraised the building. Again, we were charged with accepting proposals on the reuse and, and, and doing something with the property. So we didn't really feel that an appraisal was necessary because one, the tax rolls don't show an appraisal amount like it does on many properties because it's city-owned. Two, it, it would be hard to appraise a building legitimately with, with the, the maintenance and things that need to be done with it. So that value really doesn't come into play here because again, our goal was to get somebody, get the property in somebody's hands that's going to improve it and do something with it.
That's belonging.
All right, any other questions?
People's building.
I'd just like to pass on appreciation of Mr. Butts for your investment in downtown. We need more locals to invest in downtown and just look forward to, to, you know, the additional improvements that are to come.
Thank you.
I'd like to say the same, thank you for willing to come down and invest in our downtown area.
Thank you, John.
All right, any additional questions? All right, roll call, Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McElvy.
Yes.
Cisco.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, item two is consideration of a certificate of compliance for retail package store located at 930 Campbell Street, Jackson, Tennessee, 38301. Got a motion by Buchanan.
Second.
Have a second by Dodd. Any questions? All right, Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Disco?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Item three in our new business is the FY twenty audit report for the city of Jackson, presented by Matt Wood from Alexander Thompson Arnold.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I think I've been given presenter rights, so I'll try and share my screen here. That doesn't look any good. Can y'all see the PowerPoint?
No, we got a blank screen right now.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Let me see if I can move it over.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Why he's fine and everything, they're saying that there'll be our problem at city court. Is that not correct?
Yeah, and, um, we, um, Ms. McKinney just sent an email this morning to me, and, uh, Councilman Taylor notifying us that she has met with city court, um, and has some actionable steps to prevent that from happening in the future. And so, once we have a chance to review that, talk with Ms. McKinney and, uh, City Court Clerk Hubbard, then we'll get the council, I have, Ms. McKinney gave the report to council on that. So we can get that report issued to you all and presented to you all at next month's meeting.
Does not, does not the foliage deposit in city court? Can they collaborate together and get along?
They, they are. They're, they're working on it. It's a work in progress. I think more of the, is the processes at the court. And so, um, Ms. McKinney is working with them on their processes internally. That's where the findings were, so, um, she'll be ready, like I said, to have that report for the council next month.
Okay, thank you.
I think, Mr. Taylor, my last, uh, budget committee, we did discuss that, that I think they all are aware of the findings and they are, have put things in place to correct the issues that they are, that was found.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's, that's a positive. They are moving forward.
Yeah, again, I can tell the council that, that, um, Ms. McKinney has hit the ground running in her short time here, and, um, she's working along with many other departments with, uh, the city court to get those corrections done and improve the processes throughout the city.
The mayor took the words out of my mouth. That's exactly what I was.
I'm ready. Just keep her around, keep her around for a while.
Well, Mayor and council don't seem to be able to share it for some reason. Uh, it has been shared, uh, previously on the, with the budget committee. Uh, I'll be happy to, uh, share it with the entire council. It's just a PowerPoint presentation, not necessarily the audit report. I believe you already have that. I'll try and go through it, uh, manually if I can real quick, and then hopefully answer any questions, uh, that you have. So first, state law requires an audit, uh, of the financial statements of the city. Uh, we performed that audit for 2020. Uh, the purpose of that audit is to try and provide a true and fair view, uh, of the financial statements to hopefully determine that there is, uh, no material misstatements, hopefully enhance the degree of confidence, uh, in those financial statements. And as has just been stated, hopefully identify any insights into areas where internal controls, uh, can be improved, processes, uh, change. Also, federal law requires an, uh, a single audit, uh, a compliance audit performed on, uh, grant expenditures if a city, uh, passes seven hundred and fifty thousand, uh, in federally funded expenditures. The city did that this year. Uh, the city had four point nine one million, uh, federal grant expenditures for 2020. So my responsibility as your auditor is to plan and perform the audit, uh, to obtain reasonable assurance whether those, uh, financial statements are free of material misstatement, uh, to express an opinion on those financial statements and comply with all professional standards. So some high-level audit results are, uh, that we did issue an unmodified, which means it's a clean audit opinion on the financial statement. Uh, we believe the financial statements as presented are free of material misstatement. Uh, there were three internal control findings reported in the 2020 audit. Uh, two of these are not, uh, repeat findings, and the city did correct three of the prior year findings as well. So for the government-wide financial statements, uh, meaning you take everything into account at the city, also includes, uh, Jackson Transit Authority, uh, all the proprietary funds and the governmental funds, uh, shown on a, uh, full accrual basis of accounting. Uh, the city had two hundred and thirty-three million in assets and deferred outflows for 2020. Uh, that compares to just under two hundred and twenty-seven million last year and just over two hundred and twenty-three million two years ago. So that was a six million dollar increase. Uh, some of the significant changes was an eight million dollar increase in cash. Um, that's partly because of a three and a half million dollar decrease in investments, uh, this year. Seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollar increase, um, in the intergovernmental receivable, which that includes every state shared revenue that we receive from the state of Tennessee, local option sales tax, uh, being one of those. And there was a four and a half million dollar increase in, um, construction in progress, uh, mainly related, uh, to the improvements on FE Wright and the US forty-five bypass, um, southern extension. So for liabilities and deferred inflows, uh, that number was a hundred and fifty-seven and a half million this year, uh, as compared to a hundred and sixty million last year, a hundred and sixty-three and a half the year before that. Um, there's two and a half million dollar decrease, uh, the main, the most significant financial statement change was a two and a half million dollar decrease, uh, related to the net pension liability, uh, at TCRS. So that means total net position for the year, taking all these things into account, was seventy-five and a half million. Uh, that's a significant change from last year. Last year was sixty-six point eight six million and just under sixty million the year before. So getting to the general fund, which is gonna be the majority of our conversation, total assets were fifty-one and a half million, uh, this year compared to forty-eight point seven, uh, in the prior year and forty-seven point three the year before that. So there was a two point seven six million dollar increase in the general fund, fund, uh, assets this year. Uh, five point eight million dollar increase in cash, uh, with the corresponding three and a half million dollar decrease in investments, and that's seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollar increase in intergovernmental receivables. Total liabilities and deferred inflows for the general fund remained very consistent the last year, uh, literally ten thousand or so different. Uh, while there were fluctuations in the deferred inflows, um, there were no significant changes in the current year overall, mainly related to pensions, uh, or mainly related to, uh, grant revenue. So financial results for the general fund, the fund balance was twenty and a half million, uh, this year, compared to seventeen point seven last year. You can go through different changes, uh, inside of it. Uh, there was a two point seven five million dollar increase in general fund balance for the year. Last year's increase was four hundred and seventy-one thousand. So for the other governmental funds, uh, and when I say that, I just mean the non-general, uh, governmental funds. There was eighteen million in assets compared to fifteen point eight last year, uh, relatively small changes back and forth. However, the debt service fund, um, shows significantly different this year related to bond refunding. Uh, it had ninety-nine million dollars in current year expenditures compared to thirty-eight point seven. Uh, that's mainly, uh, wholly related to, uh, the bond refunding this year. Related to the proprietary funds, which would, uh, for 2020 include the sports flex fund, Jackson Transit Authority, solid waste fund amongst others, uh, there was eighteen million dollars, uh, in assets compared to sixteen and a half. Uh, that net position ended up at fourteen point five eight million, uh, compared to twelve last year. Uh, and there was a two point four million dollar increase in net position. One point seven seven of that, uh, was related to Jackson Transit Authority's grants, uh, and operations. So the main change in the city's financial statements for 2020 was the bond refunding. Uh, we refunded sixty-seven and a half million of debt, uh, by obtaining fifty-eight and a half million of refunding bonds. Uh, and while nothing in my presentation up to this point has, has shown that, uh, the faces of the financial statements do not look that much different than last year. It's because there was a premium on long-term debt of ten point six nine million that will not require a cash outlay of the city, uh, going forward. It's a financial statement, uh, amortization, uh, over the life of the new bonds. So there will not be a cash outlay related to that premium. It will be amortized, uh, over time. So that number will continue, uh, to improve. So some other conclusions, and I'll answer any questions that anyone has. It is an unmodified opinion, clean opinion as stated. Fund balance has increased in the general fund from seventeen point seven two last year to twenty point four seven. This is the main point I'd like to make of, of that twenty point four seven million. Nineteen and a half of that is considered unassigned or available for any use. Unassigned fund balance in the general fund is currently twenty-six point one seven percent of budgeted general fund expenditures. That compares to twenty-two and a half in nineteen, twenty-four and eighteen. Uh, every year that I've done the presentation as council, I've stated that twenty-five percent, uh, shows a healthy, uh, fund balance and shows what is restricted, what has, uh, external restrictions of any kind taken out of the mix. Um, this is the first year since 2013 that the city of Jackson has passed that number. Uh, so it was a goal, I know, uh, of the city to get to that point, and it did pass, uh, that threshold in 2020. So related to the three internal control findings, uh, the one repeat finding, uh, was exceeding budget expenditures, and I'll go through, uh, that in just a moment by pulling out the financial statement. The new findings, um, for the current year, one was related to capital asset records. Uh, we found, found's a, a, a different kind of term. We, we found assets that, uh, were not recorded in the capital asset records that were spent, uh, bought in 2020. Uh, we added those to the records. Uh, there was, it wasn't that they weren't paid for. It wasn't that they weren't, uh, expended. Uh, they just need to be recorded for the capital asset purposes. And then, as was mentioned right before my presentation, um, because the state of Tennessee came in and the comptroller's office issued a report related to city court, um, we include that audit and the findings that they found inside of our audit report as well, as required by the comptroller's office. So that finding is fairly extensive, uh, but it was items that the comptroller's office report, uh, brought up themselves. So the corrected findings from last year, uh, one was called failure to receive authorization for debt. That was really the, uh, due-to-do-from issue that's been on the city's radar for years, uh, related to the inter-fund loans between funds that was cleaned up, uh, in 2020. Uh, while there are due-to-do-from shown in the side of the financial statements, that's perfectly fine, uh, because they relate to actual activity near the end of the year, uh, that just gets cleaned up in the following few days. Reconciliation's not performed, was cleaned up. This was due to the significance of journal entries that we've had to make in, uh, previous years. Uh, that was corrected this year. The capital assets was a specific only, uh, material journal entry that we had to make. And there had been three-day deposit rule issues in previous years, uh, that was cleaned up as well. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has. Go into more detail on any of the findings if necessary, uh, but all of them, uh, were fairly straightforward this year.
Thank you, Matt. And before you ask any questions, just wanted to say thank you for the work you've done. I think this is a huge credit to our, our financial staff, uh, for the work that they have done in our departments as well. And so I want to express my appreciation for, for all of them and, and the work they do every day. So any questions from council for Matt?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As a senior council member, let me express that we have come a long way, but we got a long way to go. We are stable financially, more than I've ever seen before in twenty-seven years. As I said to you before, I've seen four million dollars in our fund balance, and I've seen eighteen million dollars. You just come on, young man, and keep going. I don't care what I say. If, if I mess up, I give you a spanking. Yes, come on, you're doing all right. You and your staff are doing a fine job. I appreciate your job, uh, uh, the job y'all doing, your finance staff. Y'all doing a good job. And if it ain't right, you know I'll tell you. Thank you so much.
I'm so shocked by that. You, you're so, usually so quiet and hold your opinions.
Of course, Scott, you know that fun, that, that fun, that fun boss that, that come in, that's his favorite word. But I like, oh, thank you for your staff. I also thank Paul. Uh, I mean, Paul's been working real hard, you know. A lot of time we might get mad at him, but he's all about trying to, they should keep us straight, but he, he does a real good job. So I want to thank him for his hard work that, that he's been doing, and thank you for your staff for trying to keep us on the right track.
I, I think it's only gonna get better with, with Tawana K. keeping us all in line, too.
Matt, I do want, uh, Mayor Conger, I do want to thank Bobby and Kathy, their entire team for the, it's an unusual year to perform an audit, uh, especially a city your size. Uh, you can do a lot of things through email and by sharing documents online, but there's a certain level where we have to be at city hall. Uh, and at every point, uh, Bobby and his team made it a safe environment where we're still able to do what we need to do, uh, and yet never put, hopefully them or our people, uh, in a compromised position related to COVID. So thank y'all for all the help this year. Uh, communication was a, uh, was a major point of our audit this year, uh, just trying to make sure we got all the information in as quick a fashion as we could, uh, to safely audit.
Thanks, man. So any questions pertaining to the audit?
Just, just to give the, the council, uh, an update on where the, the budget audit committee is. Um, as, uh, as has been alluded previously, uh, Ms. McKinney has been working on, uh, the corrective actions, um, with, uh, Mr. Hubbard at city court. Uh, Mr. Arnold, uh, has already established his corrective actions, uh, for the finding that we had related to, to the general government. Um, and so the, the budget committee, audit committee will review those, and if they're satisfied, pack, pass on a, a recommendation of, uh, being satisfied to the council at our next meeting.
And Mr. Scott, I'd like to say, I think one of your best hires that you did do with Mr. Bobby Arnold, when you brought him aboard, you couldn't have brought a better person to your staff.
I, I agree.
It was the second, second, the second.
Oh, man, um, it's might help refresh my memory here. We have to accept this audit report by vote, right?
That's right.
Yeah, was willing to, oh, yeah. Motion to approve the report.
Double.
Have a motion in a second. All right, any further discussion, questions? Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace? Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Disco?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank y'all, and thank you, Matt, for waiting with us and giving us the report. If you could email that PowerPoint out to the council and we can, uh, get that in their hands as well.
I'll do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Item four is consideration of budget amendments less than ten thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've been seeing this in here for the last two or three months, but I haven't been receiving it. A budget amendment is less than ten thousand. In my packet or anything?
I think, uh, Mr. McKenin, that, that's, uh, that would be on page twenty-two of the packet.
I don't have a.
It's just a list.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think this is, um, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a, a voting, this is just an information piece, right? Yeah, I I I don't think this is a, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a a voting, this is just an information piece, right?
Yes, that that that's correct, uh when the council approved our legislation this year. Uh it it had language in there that allows for you, the mayor, to approve budget amendments within the same fund that are ten thousand dollars or less. The only requirement is is that we provide a report at the next council meeting of those amendments that were approved. All right.
Okay, all right, item five is consideration of invoices over ten thousand.
So moving.
Second, second, any discussion? Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McKelvey.
Yes.
Cisco.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, before we adjourn, a couple of things, one, I want to recognize Councilman Cisco's birthday yesterday, happy belated birthday, day late. Next uh next month. Next month, we will meet in person for the March meeting and uh Mr. Crohn's firm uh will join us to give their final report on their investigation. Uh at that meeting in March and I think Alex has one announcement before we adjourn.
Yes, yes, thank you, I just wanted to introduce everyone virtually to Mr. Tom Wolf. He's our new city engineer, he's the gentleman that uh is going to be handling your drainage issues, your street light issues. So get to know him real well and if you want to forget about me, I understand.
Oh, you know, I haven't been up to see him full time.
And thank you, glad to have him.
Welcome aboard, uh we're excited to have you uh be a part of the team. And uh we had a a meeting earlier, I guess it was earlier this month about some goals and objectives uh for this uh this coming up fiscal year and moving forward. And you're going to be an integral part of helping plan that out, so uh I hope you've figured out where your coffee pot is.
That I am, and what I wanted to do is thank the city for the opportunity to serve as your city engineer. Uh I bring a a few years of experience to the table, but not many. I'm sure there's a lot of city employees that are younger than the number of years I've been in the business, so. But looking forward to the challenges and Alex has kind of tipped me off a little bit, so I know I know what's happening.
Mr. Chairman.
The opportunity, I really appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, then we also, we have one more addition, uh he was in here, but uh our community development director for my office is Justin Cersey. He's a Jackson native, I don't hold it against him that he's a JCM graduate, uh you know, can't try to hire all the Southside guys, but uh JCM graduate. And so he's moved back to Jackson and serving his community development, so he'll work on grant projects and um some some other projects around the city. So I get a chance to welcome him as well. Um nothing further, meeting is adjourned.
Yes, I did have something.
Yes, ma'am.
Um I would just like to state for that if Mr. Councilman Taylor will get back with us as quick as possible. And that if we can have a clear foot plan, so in case the, I believe they said the February the eighth date, to make sure she can check and see if that can be moved. But as soon as possible, just like to hear back from Mr. Taylor on what the plan's going to be so we can move as quickly as possible.
All right.
I'll copy everybody on on uh once we establish the the time that we'll meet.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.